We will call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is not on here, but we all have to wish Todd King happy birthday.
Happy birthday guys!
How old are you?
Thirty-six.
Okay.
Man, that's a year older than me.
You're still a baby.
All right, next item of business is our closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section two point two dash three seven one one. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Number one, project twenty twenty one dash ten, number two, project twenty twenty one dash eighteen. Also discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. First is agency on aging, second agricultural and forestal district advisory board. Third is the ninth district development financing incorporated board of directors. Fourth is the Montgomery Floyd regional library board, fifth is planning commission and sixth is personnel. Is there a motion? Yeah, motion and a second, did you get those?
I did.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Okay, with oral.
Ms. Levin?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Fitch Caski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed session.
And out of closed meeting, is there a motion?
Certainly.
Second. Motion in a second. Over.
All right. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Levin?
Aye.
Chair Pichkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up is the certification closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened in closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Is there a motion?
I'm moved. Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Demas?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Levin?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Pichkowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next, our county administrator will lead us in invocation pledge.
Rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is presentations, recognitions, and awards. And first up is Virginia Department of Transportation.
David Clark is with us tonight. Yes, sir. There's not a mic there.
There's not a mic. Good evening. Few little updates here. I'll hit some of the major ones first. One is that yellow sulfur road, the next project, I think six year plan is underway to finish the last mile or so. Part service yellow sulfur road contractor is pursuing that aggressively and hopes to be done by the end of this calendar year for the construction season. A lot of paving done in December, so when you get done. Second, another project that was on your six year plan, Spirit Church Road. Little water structure. Been replaced, pipe replaced, concrete is in. Just have some asphalt to put over top and it will be open early tomorrow. Cool. Only. And there was a request about a pot full on Merrimack crossover. We got that one patched, as well as other patching and gravel roads and a lot of other sort of routine summertime. Finished mowing and begun mowing again. It has been dry. We've got a lot of dust complaints. It does keep the grass from going so fast, so it's allowed us to catch on grass, but concentrate this week particularly on getting a lot of dust complaints. Pipe placement on Catawba Road. And supervisor, I did get some information on some of the question, further questions you've had on how speed studies are conducted. I'll have those in a written form. Most of the some of the stuff is available, some of the data, hard data they use is available. Traffic counts are available to the general public. We have all traffic counts on our website. That includes vehicle classification. They also do a new count when they do the speed study. It's unpublished. That new speed study count is not published. It's available online, so it might differ slightly. But I can find the speed count, I mean the traffic count that was done when that speed study was done. The other questions like you asked about roadside development characteristics, that's not data that's accessed through any kind of database. That's something they do as part of the study. And I'm waiting on some clarification on that, on exactly how those. But the crash data as well as pedestrian accidents, those we get from state police and the sheriff's office. I have it to you. Crash, crash data and traffic counts are all published type of data. We do both from other sources. That's all I have as far as my update goes. Like I said, just mostly normal routine maintenance. We will get some more safety funds soon, sort of safety and operational funds, about forty thousand dollars. We'll be working county staff to identify places. It's not a lot, but we accumulate them over a couple of years. Project that is going out. That's all comes with the new fiscal year. Also be working with county staff to work on a date, maybe in October for reviewing, maybe so, by paper. Future candidates for six year plan. That's all.
Good. Ready for rapid fire?
Yeah.
We'll just go around the room.
First thing, I'd ask you about, oh, they're coming off Price School Road.
Yes.
Next thing, it's gonna be. Now I come through there this morning and it was still there. And you hit it every time you come out.
It's in the curve.
It's where all the pavement comes together, is where it seemed to. And the next thing, of course, with the school starting, it's gonna be, how's the brush cutting going along? Long shop road's in pretty bad shape, especially between five thirteen, which is my house and I'll be shepherd, I'm not sure what his address is.
Oh, yeah, we hit a lot of those. We'll probably be hitting them as we get the calls in. That's probably most efficient, getting complaints first.
Okay, sounds good. And then, how are they coming on the paving schedule?
I'm not sure. I meant to bring that with me. I don't know what that. Think they've done, they passed out Bishop Road out that way. That gets a slurry, I believe, down there. But I don't know where they are on the rest of it. I can send you something on that.
All right.
I know we've done, but some of the stuff's done. Service treatment generally is not done. I think the plant, I thought the plant mix was done. I don't think service treatment is done yet.
Yeah, I was thinking about McCoy Road.
Oh, yeah, because they did heavy patching on that and that we'll get. So maybe they haven't done plant mix yet either. Different counties, they've done different ones. I'm sorry to keep track where they have.
Supervisor Paul?
So the railroad crossing where Janelle and Ellet Road proceed to run meet up. So if you're coming from Ellet Valley and someone's coming from Ellet Road from Blacksburg, often they will stop on the railroad tracks because those people don't stop.
Correct. Yeah, if you're coming up from the valley and you go, Janelle, that's technically a left-hander.
Right, so that's really, ends up being very dangerous for people because they don't know that they're gonna stop until like the car is right there coming around the corner, you know what I mean? If they're, is there anything we can do for that?
We've looked at a couple of things, like trying to improve the site distance. There would be, a lot of that's on railroad property. We could take, there's a berm right there. We could go knocking off that and have not gotten permission from the railroad to get out their property and do that yet. Look at that some more. I know we've looked at a lot of different things there, including changing stop situation. Bad thing about it, it's just been there so long that, just like any kind of change in a traffic situation, you're gonna have accidents when you have a change. When you put a new traffic signal stoplight, people aren't used to it. Now it's I went through the intersection, I've seen the light, it's flashing red. So hesitant to change that and then have something happen after that. Like to make the Cedar Run people stop, you know what I'm saying? Put a stop sign on Cedar Run side through the Janelle. I guess it's a quote, I'm not sure what it's called.
It's Ella. It's weird. It goes from Ella to Cedar Run to Ella.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That little section between Ella Road that goes to Cambria and Cedar Run, I'm not sure exactly what it's called.
Yeah.
It's not six hundred and thirty, I can tell you that.
So the most dangerous part of that is coming up from Ellet Valley because of the railroad tracks. Is there, you know, can we put a stop sign there at least?
We could look at a stop sign there.
You know, it's, I agree with you that, you know, it's the site thing.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, especially if you get more than one vehicle. So you get one person who's crossed the tracks, wait to turn.
It's crazy. It's crazy awful.
It's, it's just a pure intersection and I'm, I'm open to any kind of, you know, a stop sign at the tracks or, I think there is a sign that says, don't stop on the tracks.
You don't know until you're there.
Right.
Okay. This last week, I was following an eighteen-wheeler down Nellie's Cave Road. I can only imagine what must have happened when that eighteen-wheeler just kept going. Big tree branch in the middle of the road. You know, the ice storms had brought down some trees, but they were never cut because they seemed high enough. But that dragged the one horizontal branch way down by Woodland Hills, scraped the top of the truck. And the curves, they cannot stay on that road. So I was wondering if we could put a no truck through on that road and send them all through Ellet Road.
Yes. To do that, there's a process. But we can certainly.
It just seems safer because you don't want to send them down harding.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, there's that hairpin curve.
Yeah. And, yeah, and when they turn onto Woodland Hills, they're taking all that road. Both sides, they're like, ah, left lane, left lane, until they get around that. It was pretty bad. So, somebody was marking, you guys must have been marking the potholes on Happy Hollow. I don't know, but some of them are marked and some of them aren't, so I'm hoping that when you guys do fill the potholes, all of them will be full. And then there's the perennial pothole at the end of Woodland Hills, closest to the Han Farm driveway. That if you do it in the hot weather, it's gonna melt and just continue to be a problem. So if you could schedule it closer to colder weather, it'll probably hold better.
Is it Woodland Hills and Lusser's Gate?
Lusser's Gate at the Han Farm driveway. Thank you.
Supervisor Demas, you happy with your roads?
I was saying, it's the majority of minor town roads. I, I don't have any questions, but thank you for being here tonight.
And we still have that, the edge, going off on four sixty, I'm telling you. It's actually one in each direction.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Supervisor Biggs?
No, I'm fine. Thank you for trying to address all these needs.
Supervisor King?
I don't have any bad news. Appreciate the low-water bridge. They did, they did a very good job. And that was our hard equipment contractor that did that.
Supervisor Blevins?
Well, I want to thank you because I know you've been busy patching potholes, um, Lewis Gale there, Dan Mary Mack. Had a couple citizens reach out about the light cycles in the town of Christiansburg being too short. Right there in the mall area and like turns green and before they can even make that turn, it was already turned red on them. And then someone said something about the light there front of Outback, that the light cycle, I don't know, just that it were really quick light cycles. So I don't know if that was just something.
Some of the, some of the signals in the town, the town does the timing on, some of them we do. We do them on four sixty. I think the one trying to think about the one there at Outback and Arbor, because that is the end of the limited access coming off the bypass, that might be ours, I'm not positive on.
So, and I can check with the county. Also, will Betty Drive, is that gonna be opened up? I'm assuming it would be for school starting this week?
Betty Drive would be a town.
Yeah.
Like Christiansburg Elementary.
Someone asked about, I said, I assume it's gonna be open. I don't know how they'll get the school if not. And then, just, uh, any information, I know you talked about this speed study, but Route one fourteen.
Still going on one fourteen.
Very good.
They're, they're up, they have, don't have to do a complete full study, they have to update the one, that they put that on a smaller segment.
Okay, very good. And then also Supervisor Ron talking about that very dangerous spot because when they're making a left off Cedar Road and you're coming across because of the light line of sight, you can't see. Could there be possibly for letting traffic coming up Ellet, a sign that says watch for turning vehicles? Or a yield sign because it is technically a left turn if they're coming from Cedar? So that people know that when they turn and coming up, they're gonna be in that same lane of traffic just briefly and you can't see. And we don't want them to stop on the railroad tracks. So that might be something to either, but Ellet traffic note to watch for turning vehicles? Or to a yield sign because it is a left turn there that they have to yield to.
Can you change, you can actually make the curve wider from Cedar Run to Janelle? So you're moving the center of the intersection away from the railroad?
Okay.
Yeah, maybe. So at least maybe one car can be there. I mean, if there's stopped, the people behind them hopefully will be stopped, kind of thing. I don't know, that might be something.
That might be something, yeah, like I said, we get safety and operational funds, that may be something, we could look at using those at your shoulder and find that.
I don't know.
Probably have to redo the center line.
Yeah, of course, you would.
So I think it's painted as a center line.
It is.
The dotted line.
It's very dangerous for cyclists that are coming up too because you can't see, people won't see cyclists anyway and they frequent that.
We'll look at a couple of things, I'll get our, have you guys give us some ideas?
Thank you.
David, I just got two things. One, I, I know I was gonna see you tonight, so I, I waited, but I probably should have called you today on this one. I was called by a constituent last night, right at the intersection of Allegheny Springs Road and Sisson Hall Road. The pavement is, is gone. There's a hole there. It's probably two feet deep right at the edge of the pavement. If somebody gets a wheel in it, they're, they're done. It's, it's right there in downtown Allegheny Springs. Yeah, right by the low-water bridge, across from it.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's been checked here lately, if somebody's going out in the morning to check on that because they really need to get on that one. Put something in it, stone or something, but, uh, right across the street, before you get to that low-water bridge, there's an area that has eroded under the road. I know you all are aware of it because there's two reflectors that somebody put in there years ago. But the last time I looked at it, it's going under the road. So that may be something else that, while they're out there, take a look at both of those items. But they're all right there in that, that area, same area. And the other item I have for you is actually a, a nice thing. A citizen told me this weekend that you really appreciate your contractor you have working on the bridge there in Ellisston over the railroad tracks. He never did say what, what nice thing the person did for him, but apparently they, they're very good about keeping the traffic going and any issues that come along, so. That, that's always a good thing to hear, that your, your contractors are doing the right thing.
Yeah, I'll pass that on. We'll be glad to hear that.
But that's it, unless there's some follow-up from anybody? Thank you very much. All right, next item up is our first public hearing, and this is to establish voter satellite offices for the twenty twenty-one general election. Donnie?
Good evening, everybody. It's hard to believe it's been another year. I'm here just to ask that you all please consider having another satellite location. This one we would like to have in Blacksburg at the community center. And then also, we would need MP one here at the government center, just as an extension to our office. This is the governor's election, so we're not talking presidential numbers by any means. The largest governor's turnout was in twenty seventeen at forty-six percent. The last two presidencials have been right at seventy percent. The very last one was seventy, just about seventy-one point five percent. So early voting has meant a little change for us. With COVID numbers ticking up, we would appreciate an extra site.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, sir.
For this hearing, we only have one person signed up, Karen Jones. You want to come on up to the podium? You have four minutes. Please state your name and your address for us, if you would.
Good evening. My name is Karen Jones. I reside at Nacuepo Street, Northeast in Christiansburg, Virginia. Tonight, I'm here before you in my role as political action chair with the Montgomery County Bradford City Floyd County Branch of the NAACP on behalf of our president, Ms. Deborah Travis. I want to first commend our Board of Elections and our registrar, Connie Byer, for the phenomenal work during last year's election season. Their commitment to voters was evident in securing not just one satellite location, but a secondary set of location, satellite location, and offering early voting, early in-person voting for the full forty-five days. I know it was a giant feat and they did it well, and I very much appreciate that work. For this year's election season, our branch of the NAACP supports the plan, again this year, to establish the two satellite locations proposed by the registrar's office. The fundamental right of every eligible voter in Montgomery County to cast their ballot and every resident to have their voice heard as a member of our community is vitally important. In my meetings and conversations with Ms. Byer and the Board of Elections, I believe that they have worked diligently to ensure this principle. So tonight, I just ask that you support and vote yes on the recommendations from our registrar's office.
We have nobody else signed up for this particular public hearing, but if anybody else would like to come forward, give your name and your address, you would have four minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close this hearing, move to the next one. Next public hearing is special use permit Thompson Place Farm LLC Stream and Wetland Mitigation Bank.
Skipson's gonna present that information for us, and only thank you.
Good evening. The first hearing that I'll be presenting for you this evening is the Thompson Place Farm LLC Special Use Permit to allow a stream and wetland mitigation project. If you're able to see here on the aerial, this project is located in the northwest portion of the county and it has frontage on both Long Shop and Keister's Branch because of its size and acreage. It's a total of just over three hundred and eighty-eight acres for all the parcels that are included in this SUV. It is to allow for the mitigation bank. It's currently zone day one and is currently being used as a working farm. So we added this use to the ordinance back in February, so most of you will remember us using this terminology. And we provided this definition to go along with the use. And basically, it's not the same as just restoration, which happens fairly commonly. It is restoration and mitigation done intently as a bank. It offsets development impacts in other parts of the watershed. So the Obin Chain family that owns the property began this process in two thousand and fifteen. So it's a multiple-year, multiple-agency process. As you can see, it involves both the Army Corps and DEQ and some other agencies. It also requires that a conservation easement is put in place and a calculation of credits is done based on the work that gets done initially. The sale of the credits will be some income for the farm and help preserve that family farm and preserve open space as well. So just a few pictures to help orient you. These pictures here are off of, on one of the entrances on Keister's Branch. And then just kind of the, the view. We always take pictures when we put the placards out, and so this kind of gives you a sense. There were two long Keister's Branch and one long, Long Shop. This is the road leading up to the site, same things on Keister's Branch. And now we're over on Long Shop, looking at the site. So, Long Shop, basically tall grass in those pictures. Not the most exciting, but it does give you a sense of what the acreage looks like. Here, you can get a sense of how Tom's Creek runs through the property. This is actually Tom's Creek. And then there are some wetland areas you can just notice. Some old flagging here. The grass was a little tall the day these photos were up. There's some flagging for some identified wetlands there. If you take a look in the overall plan sheets that were provided in the packet, you can see there's gonna be some created new wetland areas and then there'll be enhancements and stream restoration in other portions. And this will involve taking out invasive species and then, of course, revegetation of invasive species. There'll be some grading that's done along there and potentially even a little bit of reshaping. So over the, over the year, some of the rain events have channelized and created some things that potentially wouldn't be sustainable. So as part of this project, the stream will be stabilized with this grading. This is a grading plan of just one of the wetland areas that shows you how it falls along the topography and the approach that's used. And then there'll be an overall planting of the entire site that incorporates and sort of connects those wetland areas as well as those stream, so all of them tied together here. So as we do with all applications, we took a look at transportation. The construction will not require any large machinery, plus it's already a working farm, so large machinery is in and out of there quite a bit already. There's no new roads or entrances that are proposed. Everything's kind of gonna be kept right there on the site. It's not gonna be open to the public, so it will just be sort of a behind-the-scenes work will be going on and most of it is in the center of that acreage, so you really won't even see it in a lot of places. VDOT said that all their entrances were not in need of any upgrade to be able to do the work. Certainly from an environmental standpoint, you have both Tom's Creek and Keister's Branch following, going through the property. And so, but this project is specifically for them and for their benefit, so we're not looking at impacts the way we typically are. Portions are in the flood zone and that has all been identified as part of their application process, Army Corps, DEQ, and of course the county. Should it be approved, it will still have to have a full site thing. Other than that, you can see, as we continue to look at environmental, one of the things I brought up earlier were removing invasive species and introducing more native plants. And it will enhance the existing aquatic and wildlife habitat in the area. It's gonna also restore some of the soils for wetlands, which do, are nutrient-dense. And this open space for this project is under perpetual conservation easement, is held by the New River Land Trust. In your packet of information, you did receive a letter from the land trust saying this does meet their requirements and the easement, and they support it. A site plan would be required, and it's basically gonna be similar to those sheets I shared earlier that show what type of grading they would be doing. And we will obtain copies of any permits that have been issued by other agencies if it's approved and moves forward to a site plan. When we take a look at the comprehensive plan, this portion of the county is designated as rural and you can see everything around it is designated as rural. This area is predominantly agriculture and forestry. Then when we take a look at some of the land use goals in the comprehensive plan, you can see rural does talk about rural character, existing rural nature and a predominance of agricultural uses. They are still going to be using the farm while doing this project, so these will complement one another. And of course, this fits in with one point three point one B, which is promotion of farm land retention. And this is something that they see doing that. Basically, most of what we touched on earlier does tie into an environmental goal in the comprehensive plan, preservation, mitigation. And then, of course, not impacting river streams, which is the goal of the project. So when we take a look at the analysis, So when we take a look at the analysis, one of the things to note, it's going to be the first of its kind in the New River Watershed. It's going to provide some income for the property owner, but still allow them to maintain basically the farm how it is now with only some stream and well and enhancements. It does serve a need for a development community because as there are impacts that can't be mitigated on a site in the, within the watershed right here, they'll be able to use these credits. It would disturb approximately twelve acres and add planting to nearly seventy acres. It'll also be a few shed enhancement, the parts that you can see along the branch there. A lot of the things that grow around here, the vines and things, you can see those really well now, but it'll actually be revegetated with trees that are native and some of the other plantings. So it'll be a cleaner view if you can see Tom's Creek and Keister's Branch there. We talked a little bit already about restoration and the conservation easement and there is not a public access component, so we don't have to worry about traffic and that sort of thing. So staff recommended approval of a special use permit with conditions that there's a general conformance with the plans that we had in place and that we obtained those permits that have already been issued. As part of our review, we can just check them against one another and make sure everything matches. We of course did our adjacent property notifications by mail and then we had a total of three placards, two on Keister's Branch, one on Long Shop. We also have the information put on our website. Staff received quite a few inquiries because three placards on an undeveloped portion of the county does draw a lot of interest. But almost everyone just wanted to know what it was and thought it was going to be a subdivision. So when we told them it was stream and wetland mitigation, they, they said thanks. And at the public hearing that we had on July twenty-first, we did only have one speaker and he spoke in favor of the project. So the Planning Commission did vote six to zero with one member absent and two vacancies to recommend approval to the board with those same conditions, the basic conditions for the SGP. And that's all I have for you. I'll be glad to answer any questions and also the applicant is here and would like to say a word.
Are there any questions?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Joe Obenchain. I live at one-one-five-nine-three Lee Highway in Fincastle, Virginia. I regret that my sister Beth Obenchain had longstanding plans to be out of town, out of state. She's the one that should be here. She's really been the motor behind this project. I first want to say that I know that she and I are totally support of the staff's recommendation. We appreciate the efforts of Ms. Gibson and Mr. Saunders. I would just say, and again, following up on some of the comments I've made and then I want to make a brief personal statement. This is good for the development community and it's also good. It will be good for our family to be able to maintain this farm. It'll also be good again for our general area because if there are developments and they are not able to buy wetland credits in the New River Watershed, then they've got to pay into funds that may well end up. There are funds for mitigation, but those may well end up in any other part of Virginia or even in other states. So this, you know, these funds should stay to a large extent in, in our area. I just want to say, my sister and I are sure that our father, Dr. Sam Obenchain, who was a soil scientist at Virginia Tech, would be very pleased about this for a couple of reasons. One, the attention to soils that this will improve. But also the fact that this will allow his family to maintain this property. And the fact now that two of his grandchildren, including my daughter Catherine Obenchain Pichay and four of his grandchildren are now living in the Montgomery County Blacksburg area. And they are totally committed to this property, to us maintaining the farm, as are the other family members, the current owners, about thirteen of us. So we appreciate your attention to this and ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Sir Obenchain was the only one that had signed up for this particular public address. But if anyone else would like to speak on this topic, you would get four minutes and you just need your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing. Next up is a public hearing for special use permit, campground, recreational vehicle park and boarding camp.
Emily.
My staff put these in the same presentation, so I didn't have to do that. Our second hearing this evening is another SGP request. This is property owners Brewster Griffith, William Paul Griffith, Senior Trustees. And the agent for the application is Gap Mountain Brushdown LLC. The SGP request is for campground, recreational vehicle park and boarding camp at the site. So this site is located in the far northwest portion of the county. You can see where it meets with Giles County. The access is along the orange front row. So as I mentioned in the intro, we are talking about one site, but based on the zoning ordinance, we needed to make sure that we included three uses because there are a variety of camping types in the application. So we'll start with cabins. Cabins are covered under boarding camp. And that means that there's going to, there are going to be structures. The second SGP for campers, motorhomes are covered under recreational vehicles, which we define. And then we define recreational vehicle park. And so that is the second SGP item. And the third and final is for the primitive camp sites and luxury glamping tent sites. Tents are covered under just the word campground, but only tents and campground. So we'll be talking about one site with multiple uses at the site, but the SGP did have all three uses. So let's take a look at the application details. This is over two hundred and twenty-five acres. It is fronting there on Norris Run Road and goes up to the ridge line there and where Montgomery County meets Giles County. It's a maximum of a hundred sites. There is a breakdown based on cabins, RV camper yurt and then primitive sites. The application also has a concept plan that identifies an activity barn, pavilion, bathhouses and other supporting structures for the campground. And you can also see there's basically four phases which are grouped together. When we take a look at zoning, you can see that this is zone A1 and everything around it is also zone A1. When we take a look at impact, staff spent a significant amount of time evaluating the impacts to transportation. The Norris Run Road is just classified as a local road and currently has what VDOT does in their trip count, seventy average daily trips. VDOT, it did not trigger what we call a five-twenty-seven or formal traffic impact analysis, but we did take a look at the different types of entrances that would be required. Ultimately, a moderate commercial entrance would be required. And so that is one of staff's recommendations to go ahead and obtain that. It wouldn't be required in necessarily the first phase, but staff and working with our transportation consultant determined that a moderate right at the very beginning would be best. And that ensures two-way traffic both in and out of the site with no one staging out on Norris Run. They plan to have a private internal road. They're looking at some one-way and some two-way. They're also planning to have low speed limit that will keep the dust down and also for safety. And they'll certainly have some trails and pedestrians that'll be part of the project. All of the pictures you're going to see here are on Norris Run of the entrance. That is the county vehicle pulled into the existing road of the site looking down towards Big Falls. And then this is the access road once you get a little bit further into the site. This is the access road as it exists. They do not plan to use this road. You'll notice later on in, when we're talking about the application, that they proposed a maximum grade of, actually, we have a recommended condition of no more than fifteen percent grade. Here's another shot coming out of the entrance and looking. As you can see, it's sort of geared towards only leaving in one direction. And then this is looking back towards Lick Run. When you're looking towards Big Falls, you'll notice, if you can really see in the corner there, that's where it turns to gravel and it also starts with a series of many bridges. I think there's eight, there could be nine. There's a lot of small bridges on that part of the road. Because we would be looking at proposed traffic of motorhomes, travel trailers, basically oversized vehicles that also involve trailering vehicles, we identified that this could be problematic, not just an increase in the traffic, but also the type of vehicle. The first item is that you cannot bring trailer vehicles from Big Falls across the railroad tracks. There's a sign there that shows that. Staff and the applicant did take a look. If you put this into pretty much any GPS, most don't send you that way, even though if you look at it on a map, it feels very straightforward. So we're going to talk a little bit later about how the applicant would be, if it were approved, moving forward with those who are making reservations to specifically identify the route to enter the site in the safest way. Lick Run and Norris Run are quite narrow and don't really have shoulders. So often if you need a vehicle, when you have wider vehicles, you know, you can drop a tire onto the shoulder and sort of make it work for a short passing. But there's actually not shoulders in most of the area on Lick and Norris Run. And so for something like this, we would really be looking for more of twenty-two feet with a shoulder instead of the seventeen to eighteen without a shoulder that's here. Staff certainly talked to the applicant about this, but the amount of road improvements that would have to be done would be basically all of Lick Run and all of Norris Run. So that certainly wasn't a viable condition. We also took a look at the entrance. As I mentioned, we would be looking at at least a moderate volume. Again, that is wide enough to have vehicles coming in and out of the site without having to have any staging on Norris Run. We decide we'll use private well and septic. And we did talk to the health department on the process they'll have to go through. Not only does the health department govern private well and septic, but the health department has oversight over all campgrounds. And so there's an extra layer of review that goes into, should it be approved, the campground oversight. They, the application outlines a solar field to help produce electricity if as viable to have PV and maybe on the cabins of roofs, on the roofs of cabins. They also identified several other low-impact strategies that we'd be looking at. This site does not lie in a flood zone. It's actually on the side of a mountain and so it doesn't, doesn't what? But does have some steep slopes to look at. They do plan to keep most of the vegetation in place and only disturb the areas where those phases were located, connecting those with roads and trails. If approved, they will have to do a site plan. Of course, we would coordinate with the health department on their oversight as well as VDOT and all the county reviewing agencies. They have identified to keep out of basic species. They will provide firewood and they also will be working with the forester for any of the temporary on the site. For emergency services, you'll notice that the application talks in several places about designated areas for fires and use of fire rings at the site. This is very common in, in campgrounds. We also mentioned the road grade, less than fifteen percent or less. So VDOT roads actually allow up to seventeen percent grade. So the grading should be apparatus-friendly. And then we'll also be looking at ways that the roads connected has turnaround areas and things like that for emergency services at the site with up inside the site. And then of course, as we mentioned earlier, they have to have an emergency response plan as part of their Virginia Department of Health permit. When we take a look at other impacts at the site, lighting, they've identified they would be dark sky compliant. They want to provide their guests with the opportunity to enjoy night sky benefits. Trash, they have identified beer-proof containers and having centralized areas that are emptied on a regular basis, fenced and lockable. And then for noise, they've identified their own quiet hours that will be strictly enforced and that the sites are more centrally located on the property so that adjacent property owners should have minimal disturbance. We look at the comprehensive plan. This is in what we call resource stewardship. And resource stewardship has a focus on natural resources. But also, if you go further in to our recommendations and goals, outdoor recreation is one of the preferred uses. And when we go over to environmental and economic resources, this proposed development sets aside over one hundred and eighty-eight acres of the site, which could still be used for wildlife habitat and other types of habitat that would maintain the ecosystem in place, but also have the use in place for camping. When we go further into the analysis, the applicant proposed a total of a hundred sites with a mix of the different uses. You'll notice in the conditions, we talk about a maximum of each use type. The site is designed in the clusters. And this was all provided in the information in the original application. When the commission, how they're hearing, there were several items that came up during the hearing, both from the public and from staff's analysis. So there was supplemental information that was submitted before the commission's next meeting that was also provided in your meeting packet. In order to address some of the concerns about transportation, initially, Class A and fifth wheels were included, but they are currently prohibited. So as one of the conditions that would be prohibited at the site, Class C RVs will be restricted to thirty feet or less and travel trailers twenty-five feet or less. They will be working with anyone who reserves a site there to provide the best directions and warn anyone about trailering over Big Falls. They also had limited slope of the road for emergency access, as we pointed out earlier. They planned to strategically locate the structures, getting the proximity from existing dwellings to keep noise down. Also, there was an item brought up of an existing trail system that some of the neighbors have and they have identified in that, that they would not encourage people to use it and actually would fell some trees to sort of cover the trail area that leads offsite down to the river. They'll have their own trail system on-site. They also updated their plan for trash and debris and offered several ideas that minimize the impacts of resources and on the. So that was in the supplemental packet in addition to the application. Another item that they've identified was cell boosters at the site. So when you're up on the site, you actually have pretty good cell reception, but when you're down at Norris Run Road, you have none. And so they would work their own site there to boost what is down lower for coverage on their site, but that would also have some benefit to anyone in the area, including travelers or residents. They worked on fire concerns and have been working with Tyler Hall in our emergency services office to talk about those as well as response time with Long Shop. Hiking trails are going to be clearly marked and on the property only. Motorsports of any type will not be allowed. The applicant's not interested in four-wheelers going through the project. It's specifically for camping. And then they will use the camp host model, so they will have people on-site during any time in the camping season that can address any issues that come up. So we had remaining concerns about the road. As we mentioned, that seventy ADT, the tree trimming concerns, there is overhanging trees out on Lick Run and Norris Run for these larger vehicles. If you take your passenger vehicle through there now, it's not super noticeable, but if you're driving a bus or a large vehicle, you will notice the overhang issues. And then also their initial supplemental did talk about how many camp sites, but not about how other uses such as the camp store or the pavilion could impact traffic. And so we really looked at the numbers of average daily trips going up as well as the types of vehicles that were coming through. And then while we do have the length restrictions for trailer vehicles, these vehicles tend to have a standard width that is wider than an average vehicle. So the planning commission held their hearing on June the sixteenth. There were several members of the public that brought up items from access and existing conditions at Norris Run, concerns about fire and emergency response time, and then also concerns about impacts to the view and being any access for the adjacent parcels. That was in addition to the concerns about the seventy trips per day of the people who live on Norris Run for various commuting as well as those who are have a farm in the area. So they have their own trailer and air-resist vehicles. The commission then held a meeting on July the twenty-first to further discuss the application and did receive the supplemental materials from the applicant at that time. The discussion did center around those transportation impacts. As I mentioned at the beginning, we spent a lot of time talking about transportation. But ultimately, the commission felt like the use itself was something that they wanted to be able to support. And so in the conditions that were provided to you, limitations on numbers of the types for how they sought to address the offset. So the conditions that you received copies of included site plan conformance with that map that was provided, grade not exceeding the fifteen percent, a moderate volume commercial entrance, the exterior lighting being dark sky friendly, a setback of at least fifty feet to any adjacent property line to reduce those impacts, the trash receptacles and trash collection being addressed, fires only in designated areas. All trails being adequately marked and discouraging going offsite. All permits from other agencies that they may get would also have to be in place prior to any approval by the county. The maximum number of cabins limited at forty. The cabin units do have to meet the short-term requirements and we went over that with our recent application. That's less than thirty days. Specific to recreational vehicles, no more than thirty recreational vehicle sites total with Class As and fifth wheels being restricted, Class Cs thirty feet in length and travel trailers twenty-five feet in length or less. And then as part of our code, we have a limitation. You can never have an RV set up on a site for longer than one hundred eighty days. And so that's included in with the conditions as well as a reminder. That was all the conditions that came to you from the planning commission and then they did vote six to zero to recommend approval with those conditions that they worked on over the both of those meetings. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to take them. The applicant is also here and has a few items they'd like to share with you as well.
Did I just have, did I see that some of these cabins were one to four bedrooms?
And Emily, if this were to be granted years down the road, if they did want to bring in the larger vehicles, what process do they have to go through the same thing?
The same process. It would, even amending an SGP is basically the same process as getting the individual SGP. You have both hearings to identify the use and then identify the request.
So just so I'm clear, the adding the extra three or four feet to Norris Run and Lick Run's
No, that would be for the full length of both, yes. And we did not ask the applicant to make those improvements, no.
Is the applicant John McCoy?
I believe it's Todd. This is Todd Priest, one of the applicants.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Emily, for presenting that. Emily did a great job going through the details of it and I'm not going to go through anymore the details. I was just going to go into more of the why. You know, why are, why are we applying for this? Am I just pressing down to go to the next?
Or you can use some house on the top there.
That's okay. So why campground? To my business partner and I are both outdoor enthusiasts. We travel we travel all over the country to visit different, what they're called, you know, outdoor recreation hub towns. And when we've been one of the things we noticed when we went to these places, they kind of all had a lot of the same infrastructure there. And when we came back here, we wouldn't see some of the same infrastructure here that supports a lot of that outdoor recreation. And we really think that this is a unique place, really beautiful place. We, we see a lot of stuff happening in the community to bring people to the area, but not all of this infrastructure, especially in the eco campground kind of realm. And so that's sort of the impetus for why we are bringing this forward. We think that a lot of people that would come to the area for the outdoor recreation would really be looking for this type of facility. An eco campground, we'd love to have it be a net-zero energy campground, all really low water use, low impact on the land, really preserve the wildlife and the the mountainside. And we really believe that a, one of the things you can't see on the bottom of this is that the campground would be a catalyst for a lot of growth in outdoor recreation in the area and it would support a lot of outdoor recreation businesses and also the supporting industries like gear shops, restaurants, tours, music venues, you know, shopping, those kinds of things. So thing that you can't see at the top says why Gap Mountain. This, I took this picture up there one day. You saw the three different, or the four different phases in it. And this is up in the phase three area and it's absolutely beautiful. You don't get a scenery like this in many places in this area and it's that was, it was just a beautiful day out, a spring day out. The location, Allen Norris Run, it's close to the National Forest and all of its trails. We would be having additional trails on the property. It's large enough to have plenty of trails on the property. The views are amazing. It's close to towns and recreation opportunities, but it's not too close to towns, which I think is part of the draw. People want to get away, but not too far away. You know, they want to maybe come to Blacksburg or Radford, but they don't want to feel like they're there sometimes when they're out camping. They want to feel like they got away a little bit. So that's one of the reasons we really like the site. Why now? That's what it says at the top, the next one. This past, you know, gosh, year and whatever, since the pandemic started, there's been explosion in outdoor recreation and camping. And there's a lot of people wanting to do it, but the infrastructure isn't meeting a lot of that demand, especially this type of infrastructure in this region. So we wanted to make this region a destination for this type of activity to support the outdoor recreation. And there's a lot of new growth that's going on right now that I think this would support. There's new trails out on the Brush Mountain Parks, which include the Donald Hollow, which recently opened. Huckleberry Trail is growing. There's new passenger rail. You know, there's going to be a lot of investment and access to Appalachian Trails around here. And there's new regional outdoor facilities at Mountain Lake, at Floyd, Mas, Heart's Performance Center, just a lot of new things opening up in the area. I think this would contribute. So just to close, you know, thank you for considering. We think that this eco campsite would be a good step in making this region an outdoor adventure destination. Any questions for me or is that?
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, for this public hearing on the campground, we just have one person signed up, John McLeod. Cloud, sorry. Want to come forward, state your name and address? You'll have four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and for the board. My name is John McLeod. I live at fifty-three twenty Norris Run Road. I've been a resident of Montgomery County since nineteen eighty-three, a property owner living on Gap Mountain in Norris Run since nineteen ninety-two. I have a great fondness for camping and campgrounds. I've stayed in many different campgrounds all over the United States. I've even stayed in campgrounds in New Zealand. I'll be staying in a campground in North Carolina two weeks from tonight. I attended both planning commission meetings when this stuff was addressed. I've read every document. I've submitted multiple letters detailing multiple different areas of concern. These are contained in the correspondence received, which is item number four in your packet. So I don't need to repeat any of that tonight. Instead, I want to briefly highlight a few excerpts from the Montgomery County Planning Commission staff's analysis of this special use permit, which is contained in document number three for tonight's agenda. With two important and highly relevant details from the RV Industry Association and from VDOT. The staff analysis is in the form of a memorandum due in June ninth and I am going to read from that directly. VDOT sent a letter, but did not conduct traffic impact analysis. At this point, I'm reading directly from the analysis. It was not stated in the letter if a moderate volume commercial entrance was achievable. Staff would have concerns that with limited site distance, the upgraded entrance may not be feasible. The amount of traffic impacting local routes does cause concerns. Many of the routes to access the site are not navigable. Large vehicles such as motorhomes and trucks will pull behind you. Travelers was pulled behind campers or large motorhomes cannot cross railroad tracks. Concern include the narrow roads ranging from seventeen to eighteen feet in width with grass shoulders. The recommended pavement width for a rural local road with increased traffic is twenty to twenty-two feet in width with an additional three-foot gravel shoulder on each side. There are safety concerns related to a risk of accidents due to soft shoulders and speed limit, which is currently unposted. Section six, analysis. A large concern for staff is the condition and safety of the roads for travel predators and motorhomes. Potential safety issues are substantial to both the local traffic as well as those who will be traveling to the site as visitors. Section seven, staff recommendation. After analyzing the application, staff is unable to recommend approval. Staff has substantial concerns about safety at the site entrance as well as vehicle volume, oversized vehicles traveling along existing roadways. That's the end of the staff analysis. The two items I wanted to bring forward, which are relevant, first comes from the RV Industry Association website. RVs were built eight and a half feet in width, not including side view mirrors. In the federal motor vehicle safety standards, RVs have a special exception for mirrors situated to provide a safe view for the driver along the side of the RV. So consider two RVs approaching from opposite directions on Norris Run Road. Two times eight and a half is seventeen feet, not counting the side mirrors on both sides of both vehicles. From the staff evaluation, Lick Run and Norris Run roads are seventeen feet to eighteen feet in width. The conclusion is you can't safely pass. Consider one RV and one school bus or one RV and many other regular vehicles trying to safely navigate the seventeen-foot wide public roadway. Finally, from VDOT's road design manual, appendix F, stopping sight distance on grays, the specified sight distance is varied based on design speed and road grade, but are in hundreds of feet, which is significantly greater than physically possible as a proposed reference to the commercial campground on Norris Run Road from either direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, if anyone, we don't have anybody else signed up, but if someone would like to come forward. Okay, yes, sir. Go ahead. You refers to stand-up that I saw. If you'll come forward.
If I ask you, I apologize. I may have signed up on the wrong sheet. I think I signed up in your public comment. My name is Lee Watson. I live at twenty-six seventy.
Yeah, you're, you're coming up next.
Well, this is related to the SUP, so I may have just signed up on the wrong.
Oh, okay. Okay, I got you.
You can forget about public comments and I'm not asking you for money tonight. No, there, Supervisor King.
Watson, if you'll go ahead and state your name again and your address, please.
My name is Lee Watson. I'm in twenty-six seventy-five Big Falls Road, Blacksburg, just below Norris Run. I'm also lieutenant with Long Shot McCoy Fire and Rescue. And I want to thank our Director of Planning because she covered a lot of information that honestly, coming into this late, that I had some turns about. But I just want to highlight four very simple things for you. We don't have the infrastructure down in McCoy and Norris Run, specifically from halfway down Norris Run and the Big Falls section. We don't have the infrastructure to support this. And that goes beyond just the roadway, which has been clearly addressed in a lot of different forms. There are guardrails in places and quite frankly, I appreciate that the applicant's idea that they're going to talk to people and try to get them to come in the right way. I've lived in McCoy for nine years and I've had to turn a whole lot of big vehicles around that had been told the same thing. And that's where Norris Run intersects Big Falls. It's a high-grade crossing. I wish people would listen, but unfortunately, they don't always follow the directions that we have. Beyond that, power, communications, infrastructure, they're all stretched. We're the last mile down there. There are nineteen clients below the last section of her AP. And I realize I appreciate the client, the applicant's idea of going with solar, but the fact is, some of our infrastructure is forty years old. The last five power outages in McCoy were not related to storm damage. They were related primarily to equipment failures by AP from equipment that was old and at the end of life. So this is something that is concerning for us because we already have a load. And that goes, you know, I know Chairman Vidjihowski and Administrator Meadows, I emailed you a while back about the lack of communications infrastructure down there. People like their mobile devices and it's great at the top. But down where you access Norris Run, which brings me to a second point, we don't have public safety communications on Norris Run. Okay, this is a major life safety issue for us, not just in terms of the people that are guests at their campground, but also for our responders that are coming. That's a dead zone. And it's a dead zone, not just for public safety, mobile radio, but Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, rescue, everybody, but also for most cell phone carriers. And quite frankly, we've looked at cell boosters and all kinds of things for our section and they simply don't provide the type of bandwidth and the ability to do that. So, you know, that's a problem. We talk about vehicular access quite a bit. You know, even routing, I played with the routing while I was sitting in the parking lot from four sixty N and it was trying to take me down McCoy and Big Falls and bring me in that way. You know, we're not going to beat that horse anymore. The last thing I want to bring up is that, you know, people that are coming for this type of recreation are going to want to use the river. They're a mile from the river. There's no public access down there unless you come all the way up to Whiteville or unless you go over into Giles County. We already have a huge traffic problem down there on any weekend. We already have a huge traffic problem down there on any weekend. We don't have shoulders. We don't have adequate public access for parking. We had a nine-one-one call on Sunday evening or Saturday evening. And we had a double the time getting our truck along the main road. So these are the kinds of things why we feel like at this point, we can't support the SUP. I talked with Chief Sheeler. I talked with CJ Williams, our president. At this point, we're not comfortable with the plans. We're not comfortable with our ability to access the site. Yes, there are a lot of things regarding emergency equipment, but at Long Shop, our equipment is big. You know, who's gonna invest in us having a mule to be able to go up into the smaller campsites and be able to bring a victim down to a larger piece of equipment? So we have some concerns. We certainly want to support development. We love the fact that somebody's looking in our neck of the woods to try and develop and encourage that. But at this point, we just can't support it, and that's both me as an individual and me as a volunteer in this community. And I appreciate everything you do for us. If you have any questions, by all means, reach out to us. We'd be glad to talk with you and work with you. That goes for you as well now. You have any question?
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. You want to come on up, give us your name and your address? We'll have four minutes.
Dave Harrison from fifteen forty-one Doris Run. I have four parcels close to this property. Some of it, that's the property, a couple houses there. We farm. And I tell you, I'm reluctant to address the committee, the commission, because I like the ideal of camping and having places to go that are good, but this is wrong. You don't build a house on a shoddy foundation. It can be a beautiful house, but it's gonna have problems. And there are real problems here, well-articulated by others. But for example, the other day, last week in fact, I saw my first RV on that road. I'd never seen one. It wasn't a big RV, but we were in a head-on situation. This is vertical land with a little road that serpentines around. And this RV was in my lane, trying to avoid the trees on the side of the road. The trees approach upon the road that's already narrow. And if you continue on down, if I imagine myself in an RV going down that road, it's vertical. I really question this notion of having a fifty percent grade, but I'll have to trust other people. But it immediately transitions into a single-lane bridge, a gravel road. And I imagine the nightmare of somebody trying to find a good campsite with their RV with their family, getting down there on that single-lane road, gravel road, my son slid off the side of it the other day, pounding to the creek. It's that tight. He's got a small car. But if you continue on down that, you don't back out of that with an RV. And if you continue on, as other people have articulated, that crossing for the railroad, it's shaped like this. I worry about taking my F-150 over the top of it. But if you had an RV, you're gonna be sitting there with your family. I'm really not confident here. I think you'll be sitting there with your family, waiting for the train to come down that road. It's not a healthy situation. This is a wonderful ideal, but we don't have the infrastructure to support it. It's gonna be bad. We've had a lot of fires down there. There's no internet. There's no cellphone. And when you get a fire, you get in your car. If you want to call anybody, you get in your car and you drive to, almost to Kroger in Blacksburg before I pick up my T-Mobile signal. My son can get his further out. But there's real communication problems. And if somebody's in a desperate situation, which they will be, especially if the fire starts down, there's tremendous amount of fuel, especially this time of year when it's dry. And we've had fires down there, but people are gonna be hurt. This needs, infrastructure needs a foundation before you build this house. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for what you do.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue of campground? If no one else comes forward, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing.
Can I ask Emily a question? Emily, did you ever have the Long Shop Fire and Rescue people give you a word for officially?
We were unable, as were the applicant, and also Tyler reached out. So we, we never got any correspondence. And the gentleman's name that you used is, Sheeler, is, was our contact.
And the planning commission therefore didn't get any of that information either.
Emily, did the planning commission members actually go to the site?
Yes.
We all got to see it. Okay, thank you.
Not all of them. Four of us, I mean, and I'm not a planning commissioner.
Not all planning commissioners. All planning commissioners have the ability to go to the site. And then we took, yes, there were four commissioners who went out on the site before the second meeting we had.
Thank you. That, that was my same question. Did all of the commissioners decide? Because I did today, and I have major concerns with the one lane bridges there. They're like seven or eight. It's not wide enough. There are a lot of blind spots. There is no cell service. I took pictures. There's no way in our, my GPS told me to come through the long shop through. That way where the rail is, there's no way I can see a, I'm not an expert on RVs. Mr. Vidjihowski probably is better, but I can't see it coming up that great. And so I have major concerns with also no cell service there for emergencies. And as we went back down Big Falls, there are lots of people enjoying the river, blocking the roadway, and we would have to stop, and there's nowhere for you to go for that. So accessibility and the road infrastructure is just, just want to make sure that all the commissioners realize how tight and narrow it is there.
Anyone else have any follow-up for Emily?
I'll just say, I've driven a school bus down that road, and then I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare want to take an RV now.
Do you still have your radio antenna?
I do, but I had to replace it.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, next up is the public address. Now, the Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, please observe the policy below regarding public address and the presentation of visuals. And those policies are basically, you get four minutes, name and address, direct your comments to the board, and there is no back and forth with the board. It's your opportunity to say what you would like. And the only person we had was you, Lee, that signed up. And I guess you said your, your, your piece, but if anybody else would like to come up, talk about any topic, you would have four minutes. All right, seeing no one come forward, we'll close public address. Next item is addendum.
I'll addendum this evening, sir.
You have no addendum. Next item is our items of consent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None. Secretary, if you call, roll.
Mr. Mas.
Hi.
Ms. Bell.
Hi.
Mr. Shepherd.
Hi.
Ms. Levens.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Ms. Spies.
Hi.
Chair Vidjihowski.
Hi.
Seven I's.
Next item is going into work session. Is there a motion?
Summon second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Bell.
Hi.
Mr. Shepherd.
Hi.
Ms. Levens.
Hi.
Ms. Spies.
Hi.
Mr. Mas.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi.
Chair Vidjihowski.
Hi.
Seven I's.
All right, we're in work session. First item is DePaul Community Resources Triennial Review Property Tax Exemption.
Chair, back on July twenty-eighteen, the board approved DePaul Community Resources' request for a tax exemption on two parcels that are on Franklin Street in Christiansburg. Paul is required to comply as any act, one who receives a tax permit is, every three years in order to maintain the tax exempt status, maintain the tax exempt status. The county attorney has reviewed the renewal application. Paul has indicated they're only leasing about eighty-six hundred square feet of their eleven thousand one hundred square feet of the building. They're attempting to lease the remaining occupied space of twenty-five hundred square feet. This is an opportunity for the board to discuss this item as to whether you want to continue the tax exemption or not. Staff is here. If you have any questions as well, we'll try to answer those.
Yes, and we do. Yep, there you are. Do you have somebody? Would you like to say a few words before we get started?
Yeah, I am Mike Norton, CFO for DePaul Community Resources. I was here three years ago. We, the call's been around for forty years. We've been thirty years here in Christiansburg. Three years ago, or four years ago, we bought that property on Franklin Street because we were expanding. And so within three years, we applied for the application. So the last three years, we've had a very successful programs. We had over a hundred and forty children that went through our adoption program. We've had seventy-two foster children go through that program. Those adoption services that we worked with seventy-seven families. So we've been very busy the last three years. We've even started a new sponsored residential program where matched families for individuals with developmental disabilities. We operated during COVID, but we've also, because of the way we're doing our work, it's probably many of you have experienced, we're starting to do more remote work, so our, our space needs were, are kind of being reduced. So we did reconsider, we had some empty space, and we were considering leasing that. It wasn't until I filled out this application that I thought I might be running afoul of the ordinance. So what I would like to communicate here is that our intent and wish to comply with the county's current ordinance. So if we don't need to desist or cease, you know, trying to lease this, that would be our, our wish. If we did lease to a nonprofit, we'd be open to doing that. But again, I actually didn't think about it when we started like going through this and thinking, well, we got some empty space. Then I did the application. I go, uh-oh. So that's what I wanted to communicate to the board. We really want to, you know, be in compliance. I didn't, it was not my intent to be out of compliance. Whatever you all decide you need to do to, to be in compliance, we're willing to do so.
And you haven't entered into a lease for that?
No, we're just kind of kicking around, you know.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, do we need to clarify from legal counsel exactly? Or then make sure it's all?
Yeah, but do you have any questions for him right now?
I gotta go.
Okay.
I mean, you probably don't have it figured right now. But you tell me, like, Montgomery County and the state and federal, what each one of them fund you?
Montgomery State, I, I couldn't. Yeah, I'd have to go back and get those numbers. But our state and federal funding is roughly ninety-seven percent of DePaul's total revenue. Yeah, we rely heavily on, on state, federal funding. We receive, for our adoption services, we receive grant funding, and that allows us to provide no-cost adoption services to families. So we do receive the funding, but we use that to provide these services, adoption, foster care, the sponsored residential for development disabilities. But I don't have the specific numbers from Montgomery County.
And the one question we were asked, and Angie, you can correct me if I state this wrong. Only funds that Paul receives from Montgomery County comes through Department of Social Services where we place a child. That's paid for through the CSA.
Yes, yes.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It's still true.
You have any other questions? Any other questions?
So you're currently in negotiations with a potential tenant for the, for my?
No, I've just stuck out a sign for lease, basically.
Okay.
Did that a couple, few months ago. In doing this application, that's when the current staff brought it to my attention.
So Marty, the county attorney has issued an opinion that the tax exempt status is contingent upon the property being used by DePaul exclusively for charitable and benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis. So that should, I think that's something that we need to resolve amongst ourselves.
That's what I was trying to bring up.
Yeah. I, obviously, it could be taken completely off the table for profit lease.
Right. Just be.
Well, Marty, if you'll clarify that, where, where that stands. So if they were to even lease to another nonprofit and they accepted money from that, would that be permissible?
The nonprofit, the lease to the act, the operating and charitable and benevolent purpose.
But they could, they could do that.
Yeah, they could do that so long as it's a nonprofit. And the person who's using, or the company or entity that's using it is doing it as a charitable and benevolent purpose.
Okay, so anything else, commercial or business-wise would be?
Yeah, it would be that they're able to file.
For like the chain fair is a nonprofit, but it's not a five oh one C three.
Yeah, and it's probably not charitable and benevolent. The reason it's charitable and benevolent, because that, that's what DePaul came under for. Well, not just five oh one C three, that's, that's a requirement. Hey, you guys operate a charitable.
So I'm thinking you wouldn't be likely to co-locate with an organization, a nonprofit, even if it didn't align with your mission. So it's like you have the diaper pantry come and say they need a storage space that might work for the purposes of DePaul.
Correct, as long as it's not a contract.
The ordinance doesn't require that the nonprofit that might lease this property does anything with DePaul, other than leases property and is benevolent and charitable.
What, what it requires is, DePaul is required to only use the property exclusively charitable and benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis. So lease the property to somebody, they have to use it in that way.
So in other words, that gives the applicant for tax exemption the authority to lease it to somebody else under those circumstances.
Correct, yeah.
Twenty-five hundred.
What we're saying is, so okay, we're granting you an exemption because you're using that property in charitable, charitable, benevolent way, and it's nonprofit. So if they have someone doing it on their behalf, or was leased on their behalf.
It just, it just seems to me that if another nonprofit were to lease part of that space, that that nonprofit should be in the same situation as DePaul applying for that exemption. Our ordinance is written that way.
Well, and that nonprofit's not paying taxes.
Yeah, this would be a property tax.
Yeah, it's a real problem.
So how, how do we, who determines what is charitable and benevolent? We say that quarter of the property. So you're saying if they found a tenant, that we would have the ability to say, yeah, I made it to.
I think so. We're in reason.
And so they can use the rent money as profit though for them, right?
Revenue.
Revenue, yeah.
Not for profit.
Not, yeah.
But it goes to them.
It'd be income to use for their mission.
Yeah.
And that's not legal.
Profits probably not us.
The profits, yeah, just we.
I sound like a backdoor to my blood.
Yeah, it's provide more services. I mean, this is a benevolent and charitable nonprofit. But they're not allowed to retain a lot of earnings. They have to turn any revenue around for their mission.
Before we vote on this, can we have how much profit they made last year and what the state gives them?
Like their balance sheet?
Yeah.
The nine ninety was provided in the.
The nine ninety was provided in the, in the application.
If this makes it easy, I'm more than willing not to, to lease it out and try to, to expand and use it for other purposes.
I'm, I'm just saying that nonprofit, charitable and benevolent nonprofits in the area are looking for space. And this is, this could be an excellent space for some of those organizations.
Yes, sir, and we definitely do not, and our intent is not to put you on the hot seat.
Right.
This is an issue that we've actually talked about, irregardless.
I figured when I, I read this, I was like, I'm gonna be on the hot seat.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, this is something that we've talked about in the past about maybe clarifying it for our own purposes.
Yeah.
This, this.
I mean, we still have a lot of build out and that space has not been built out, so we have to put it back through the zoom. It's, it's a lot of money, so it's, it's not like we're getting rich off that.
When will this be on our agenda for effect?
We can, we have to decide by the, by the end of the year.
That's what it falls.
We've got some time.
So I think what I'm hearing from Todd is we need a, the copy of their nine ninety. And then also, what are, what is their funding from state, federal?
That should be all about.
Their last audited.
Yes, and I can provide most recent finances as well. Basically yours, June. Let's put our heads together and if there's something we're missing, we'll touch base with you.
Okay, any other further questions?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your service.
Right, the number two is legislative priorities for twenty twenty-two.
The only reason this is on here this evening is to get your wheels turning on faults for twenty twenty-two. I, it been, this came up in agenda review, I said, really? But yeah, well, just a few months, we'll be back in Richmond lobbying our legislators. For twenty twenty-two, what we've done is attach the priorities that the board identified for twenty twenty-one. That's attached. Also, Vice Chair Biggs, Supervisor DeMots, on the VACO board, attach the VACO legislative program, just so you're aware of what VACO is lobbying for on our behalf. Anyone wants to have any discussion this evening? Let's to suggest anything that needs to be added that's not currently on the list that you see right off. This is for your time to talk about priorities.
Does anybody have a new one to add?
Go ahead, sir.
In the school section, education section, should we put, or would it be useful for us to put funding for school upgrades and maintenance and replacement in there, in, you know, infrastructure for schools? There's nothing in there now. But what really prompted me is like all this CARES Act money, right? But that's gonna be separate and only do so much, and we still need schools in our county.
A reference regarding school infrastructure.
Yeah, and maintenance or whatever.
Yes, we could certainly do that.
The other thing that struck me as I was reviewing was, do we ever get a copy or could we ever get a copy from Montgomery County Public Schools and their legislative priorities? Because we could support them.
Do they adopt?
Uh, I would just say I'm not sure.
I would hope that they would, but.
Yeah, they have legisla-, they talk to their legislators about, yeah.
That's right. Does it have a formal answer?
Yeah, I'm just, they have it going out anger, but yeah.
Certainly ask.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, and I don't know if it's rela-, if it makes sense to have it here, is under the taxation section, I know that you've been working with Virginia Tech about taxing commercial space. But do we need to put anything in here to help support your efforts? Would that help in any way? I just thought I'd bring that up.
The short answer is the efforts continue to move forward. We had a change with Dr. Dooley retiring. Ms. McClanahan coming on board, but she has continued the discussion. As I've mentioned to you, to the board previously, COVID kind of knocked everything a little sideways for a while, but that, that is still on track.
It is, so we, there's no support from the state?
Not yet.
Okay.
I would certainly, and, and I will say in my discussions, Art Brennell's been with me on those discussions, with our discussions about that issue. We've indicated there's political will to talk to legislator, legislature about that if we can't come to some agreement.
Do you mean you've indicated that, like, we would approach?
To legislature, yes.
I think we already have.
Well, we have and they're aware of it.
But we won't push it.
Not yet.
It's not the, at that point.
Not yet, and I think, I think we're making progress there. We don't, we have a final agreement.
No, I'm not asking you.
But I think we're making progress.
I just wanted to make sure that
Yes, ma'am.
if this was an opportunity, this would be the time, the document to do it. The last thing that I thought of was in the transportation section, you know, it talks about eighty-one improvements and things, but we talk about fire and rescue to support eighty-one and all the crashes in our county, which is an unfunded mandate, right? So can we ask for funding from a state level supplemental funding for our fire and rescue per, yeah, I don't know what that looks like, but for
But you could do it either.
all the calls that we fund.
We had a crazy day today.
Yeah, either per call or maybe.
Yeah, you did.
You had a crazy day today.
Yeah, you did.
Maybe per mile, I mean, other counties have to stand.
We have, we need, we need a refar.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, we need a refar.
Well, I mean, if we're looking at it as an unfunded mandate, under the funding section, it specifically addresses public safety and it could be added as a clause there.
I was thinking more along where the eighty-one and transportation.
Getting some transportation.
But it doesn't matter to me, I just wanted to see if that made sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, great idea.
Something you've been bringing up.
Yeah, forever, because every time it happens.
Well, we, we spent a lot of time out on the interstate today. We had an accident and we had an accident because of the accident.
And then the last thing, which the, the last thing, which kind of tees off of Mr. Watson's comments. Sheriff Parton, and I'm sure Steve and Todd and Daryl and all of us know there's quarters of this county where there's no cell reception and stuff. And, and then the law enforcement and fire and rescue has no, you know, reception along with broadband, which is super great. But it doesn't help that communication. Can, can we ask the state to help roll out wireless communicate, fire, rescue, law enforcement, wireless communication funding?
You could ask.
Well, that's, this is the venue to ask, that's the whole thing.
They've provided some funding, they've provided some funding that's helped us upgrade some of the nine one one equipment. Certainly ask, for sure.
I don't know if other people are interested in that, but I, I know that the sheriffs.
I think we need to prioritize what we're asking for, to make sure that we're asking for our highest priority items, that we have the most impact at the challenge simply. So we never get everything.
Right.
Maybe we can get some things, but once we all contribute our ideas, we'll need to probably say, let's fight for this, you know?
That's a good point too, because I think when we started doing this, and it was probably before I came on this board, it was one page.
Yeah.
And now it's two pages, and I understand some counties are three pages. And I think the more you throw out there, the less you're gonna get back, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're right, we need to have it prioritized.
I think that was the, the thought behind not having but one page.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, I always put it right in front of them.
Yeah, thanks to Jen and her staff, though, we've made it look
We have that really, yeah, that's super awesome.
We have that really cool presentation now that they all go, wow, this is nice.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not married to that idea by any stretch of the imagination, but I want to bring it up.
Going along with your idea, it would really be sort of, I would like to know what parts of our county don't have that kind of reception that fire and rescue need, because I was completely unaware of this.
Every holler.
I thought that was something that had been worked on over the years to get that straight, so that the agencies could communicate to each other and all that, so.
Man, it's not perfect.
Well, then what do we need to do? I mean, what areas need to be served?
Well, as, as Mr. Watson said, yeah, your, your last mile, if there's nineteen customers AEP down the line, remember, we're in the last mile.
Well, we, you know. I think.
And those are the most expensive ones to build out.
I think we need to really do something about that.
Much, much, much better than it has been. And I'm not taking credit for any of that, but the time I've been here, it's much, much, much better, just because of the investment of the nine one one authority, radios and all that. That because of the board, it's a lot better. Boards put money in it, yes, certainly have.
Well, I've got friends that live in North Jerome that have agreed to, went to Verizon and agreed to donate property, to put a tower, and they won't do it.
There's just not enough customers down there for it to be profitable.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all about money.
Yeah.
Need a lot more in here.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, we need to be aware of what's needed, so we can.
I think it would be great to have all of the ideas and then we can figure out how to get it to, we're at a two, yeah, we're at a two plus page document now. So how do we make the most impact?
So your job is to put them in writing.
We'll get it.
Yeah, they do it, and do it thinking.
We got, we got group of your, we'll figure it out.
It won't be that hard to put the facilities staying in maintenance, and that's really important, we can say that will be easy to do.
I mean, and they've talked about it numerous occasions in the last year and a half about deteriorating schools.
Right, they need to put their money where their mouth is.
Well, it's nice to talk about it, people like to hear about it. Talk about how important it is.
Any other legislative priorities anybody else come up with? I had one, but I'm still working on it, so I'm not gonna break it up yet.
We will have this on a future agenda of college, get ready.
When do we need to decide on our legislative priorities?
We, we should decide on October, because we like to have the Florida VACO conference in November, so we can start discussing them and then be ready to go in January, so this, October.
All right, that's the end of it. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMats?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Sheriff Fajcowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, new business. First up, ordinance establishing voter satellite offices. Is there a motion?
Second. I don't even try.
See what you, you do here.
We all want to support Connie.
All right, is there any discussion? Other than we all think it's a great idea?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So Madam Secretary, if you call a roll, make it official.
All right, Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMats?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Sheriff Fajcowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next up is ordinance of special use permit, Thompson Place Farm LLC, the mitigation bank. All right, only one. Someone's gonna take second fiddle.
Listen in your second.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so Daryl can do the motion and Cherry can get the second on it. All right, is there any discussion?
I just want to say, this is phenomenal. I think it's such a great idea. If we could have more of this in our county, it would just be so much better. But this is a great place to start. I got to go see the property, pretty cool stuff. Good job, excited.
How you like my backyard?
I know.
And the, the point is not lost on me, as, you know, the work that I am doing may necessitate purchase of these types of credits at some point. And the ability to purchase in, in the community in which I live is very important. Please tell Beth that we missed her tonight as well. It would have been great to see her, but we understand.
And I would just like to add that the open chains have been so good in the community about looking out for the community and your, and your service to the community.
Of the land.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Feeling none? Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMats?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Sheriff Fajcowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up is the memorandum of understanding, the Virginia opioid abatement fund settlement allocation. Is there a motion?
Some of it.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just remember that, you know, when that money comes, community services board has requested some of that money.
Yes, I think you all saw the, the breakdown on how the money was gonna be broken down. The one thing we don't know yet, Marty, is
The number.
The number.
We're gonna get a check for twenty-three cents.
Yeah, I know, and we'll give it to me.
Yeah, our dreams of
It was like a class action.
Yeah, a huge settlement is, is vastly fading. Any other discussion?
Thank you for your work on this one.
Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMats?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Sheriff Fajcowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next up, our reports, starting with our county attorney.
I still have a report other than, well, I'll update the reports to get some figures.
That's good, that's a good save there, Marty. All right, our county administrator.
Two things I just wanted to mention briefly this evening. First, had a very good meeting on broadband today. We are working on a very large project in partnership with Ulaske County and Bland County. And I'll be sharing more information on that with the board later this week, but it's a very, very big project. We're excited about it. We had a conference call with the DHCD group that handles the Batty program, and they're very excited about it. So keep, we've got to go through a process, so keep, keep your fingers crossed. Also, we just wanted to mention to you that after taking a brief break for a few weeks over the summer, the NRV Public Health Task Force began meeting again this morning, and we're gonna meet each Monday going forward. At this time, the county is holding steady with our current COVID-nineteen workplace policy, which strongly encourages employees who have not been vaccinated to wear a face cover. In the task force meeting this morning, we emphasized again the importance of people becoming fully vaccinated. In addition, this afternoon, we received updated guidance from the Task Force Business Continuity Team that outlines steps to take regarding quarantine when there's a known exposure to COVID-nineteen. As I've shared in previous messages to our employees, our actions during this pandemic remain a matter of individual responsibility and showing respect for those around us. It's up to each employee as to whether they choose to get the vaccine or not. Counting on those who have chosen not to get the COVID vaccine, or who may be immunocompromised, please wear a face covering to protect themselves and those they come in contact with. Finally, we're gonna keep reminding employees if they're sick, they need to stay home and not come to work until they're no longer sick. As we have from the beginning, if an employee can work from home and are approved for remote work by their department head, we will allow employees to work remotely as well. I just want to remind everybody that we continue to be very involved with the task force. We're gonna continue to evaluate data in the community, and we will be willing to adjust the practices of the county if needed, the situation warrants. For now, we're gonna continue to emphasize personal responsibility, and we're asking that all, that we all respect one another, especially regarding your choice to mask. That's all I have.
Did you have that memorized?
I, I have to thank two of the ladies over here for getting, as I call it, they give me the two by fours and then I frame it up to finish.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Move on to the board supervisors. I'll go down my list, starting with Supervisor Bone.
Great stepping out downtown Blacksburg. And I just want to thank the administration of this county for being so proactive with their legislative, legislative. the administration of this county for being so proactive with their legislative agen- legislative agenda. Um, I encourage us to schedule all our legislators to meet with us sooner than later so that we can get most of them. That's it. I'm sorry, I will not be at the next meeting, though. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor King.
I don't have no report, but I just hope we don't have to do it last year deal. With this COVID, so it, it really has employees concerned. I've talked to a lot of employees. They're all concerned, and then. So I'm gonna go this way, and so I'm gonna go that. That's what we're just trying to, trying to protect everybody as best we can.
Thank you. Supervisor Blevins.
I, no report, just wanted to congratulate and thank everyone that, um, supported and supervisor Biggs that was a sponsor for the ACE race this weekend, the virtual race. Um, it's great to see such a, um, event so supported by our community, um, for that. Just wanted to give a good shout out to that, and also that this coming up week, I think a few of us will be participating in the VACO official, uh, uh, summit. That'll be this coming up week, right? Correct, yeah. Next week, next week, next week. That's right, next week, that's correct.
Right, thank you. Supervisor Demas.
Um. Don't really have much to report. Um, I appreciated your report about, um, what's going on with COVID. I think it, I, I don't wanna read into it, um, but I do think that it is important that the Public Health Task Force has begun meeting weekly again. As. The, I guess, the official person at my company who, who tries to handle how we respond to the pandemic as a company, um, with vaccinated and unvaccinated employees. Um, the number of times this week and last week, that's one day, I've said, I think it's very important. All United States presidents that are living are vaccinated. All fifty governors, regardless of political party, are vaccinated. Getting vaccinated is not a political issue. It is a personal decision. Some people cannot get vaccinated for medical reasons, but. Um, I would urge anybody that's listening that has not taken the opportunity to get a free vaccine to please consider doing so.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
No report. Question, did you ever hear anything from, uh, extension agent? I called Mr. Metis last week about, uh, I had one of the farmers locally question about state emergency for the drought, as it's already starting to feed.
Yeah, I've seen some people doing second cuttings that are pathetic.
There is nothing to cut down there.
I'll, I'll follow up with that again, and if I get an answer, I'll, I'll clarify.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Biggs.
I agree with Supervisor Demas that, you know, getting the vaccine protects others. As well as yourself, and I think it's really important. I realize it's individual choice, but, you know, I'm, I'm a little. Worried about what might happen down the road here. Um, and I also wanted to go back to, um, Supervisor Blevins. Um, I've supported ACE ever since we've gotten it, and, and, and it was great to see Sherry there and David Parton was there. And Sherry had a good idea. She was saying like, well, maybe we could get involved in volunteering. Um, you know, they, they have a time when you come pick up T-shirts and you do all this kinda stuff, and I thought that was a really good suggestion. I've done that before with Martha Ann Stallings, and she likes to get the young people involved, like the ACE students, but it is a really good PR thing. It really is, so.
I'm out of that.
Thank you. Thank you for.
And the other thing with them, you know how I spring up that you can always be a sponsor with money?
Money.
Money, Todd, money.
All right, time to move on to me. Um, I went to something very interesting yesterday. It was the tenth annual Great Road Encampment. And I just realized that I've been trying to keep you all informed on some of the historical things going on in my district. And the one I reported on was the, uh, markers that'll be down at Father and Gay on the, the, uh, the Elliston Straightaway. They still haven't put up the sign yet. I don't know what they're waiting on, but they've had their ceremony. But this, uh, Great Road Encampment, ha- this is the tenth anniversary of it. They do it every year down there next to the Elliston Fire Department, and then Field right next door. And it is very interesting and very educational. They have demonstrations, and basically, they, they are looking at the years seventeen hundred to seventeen ninety-nine. That's kind of the era they're covering, but they have demonstrations by reenactors. Um, they talk about the history of the Great Road, which came through here. Um, they have demonstrations of, uh, flintlock muskets. They don't shoot them, but they show you them. Camp cooking, knife and tomahawk throwing, they are allowed to do that. That's kinda scary. Leatherwork, lac smithing, um, the clothing, spinning weaving, and, uh, it was a fellow there that was doing some, uh, cane, teaming work on, uh, some chairs. It's very interesting stuff, you know? Kinda takes you back in time as to how, uh, folks lived, but the Great Road was traveled by George Washington, Daniel Boone, Andrew Lewis, William Preston, Adam Harmon, and the Ingalls and Draper families. So it's really, it's, it's really a, a neat, uh, affair, and our Parks and Rec are involved with that and help them out. And I didn't realize that, but they, uh, they helped them out. They even deliver a couple of, uh, porta potties down there to kinda, uh, take care of business, so to speak. But, uh, yeah, that was, it was great. Uh, the only thing, uh, that I heard is they, they really should be having it in October because it was hot. Very hot, and they're wearing all those time period costumes, and I was thinking, I don't know how they do it. Yeah, very, but it was very, very interesting. Um, so hopefully, we'll, we'll get ahead of that next year and let you all know a little bit better. But coming up again in Allegheny Springs in October on the seventeenth. There's a dedication of a hundred-year farm.
Century farm.
Century farm. And it's another program, history program, and that's gonna be a presentation down there, which, well, we'd be invited to. But that'll be coming up in October, so I'll try to remind everybody in case you're interested in it. But that's all I've got, unless anybody else does something else, yes, ma'am.
Tomato festival.
The tomato festival is coming up, and I can't remember the date.
It's not this weekend, it's the following.
It'll be the twenty-first, I think.
Their fried green tomatoes are outstanding.
Now, it's the same to just leave your windows down every time you go out, so tomatoes carry a color.
It's a great festival.
Yeah, that's the, that's the first county event I went to back in the night when I came here. That was a lot of fun. My girls loved it. It was a lot of fun.
Baggers.
Baggers.
All right, with, uh, tomatoes being the last topic, we're.